Hi, good evening. It is six o'clock and so I welcome each of you to the regular session board meeting of the school district of Oconee County Board of Trustees on this day, May 17th. As we begin all of our meetings, if you would like to join me, I invite you to join me for a moment of silence. Amen. At this time, I invite you to stand with me and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
(Clerk) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The very first thing that we're going to be doing tonight is recognizing some of our students, and this is one of our favorite things to do. There's two groups here with us tonight, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Thorson and let him give you a little history on these two.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. And our first recognition is a special team we have at one of our high schools. We have ROTC at all of our high schools, and we recently had a rifle team with a lot of success, and I think you'll notice something unique about this rifle team that just kind of, I guess, unique is the right word, but an all-female team that was very successful. So we have Colonel Mangan here from Wauhala High School, junior ROTC, and he's going to address, introduce these young ladies and just share a little bit about their success.
Thank you, Dr. Thorson. Ladies, step up here right quick. So I have four ladies, we actually have 10 on the team, they're all girls, too. And out of my group, Samantha Bryant, and Lily Watkins is the team captain, and Jamie Hernandez, and Bianca Montieth. The unique thing is, we're at Wauhala High School, very small school, but they compete to make the nationals for Army Junior ROTC, which they made. The selection, you had to be in the top 40 in the U.S. to be able to make it. So then we shot our competitions nationally, and they came out, out of all Army Junior ROTCs in the United States, came out fourth, and then[201.56][201.56](APPLAUSE) and then obviously set a school record also, but then they combine it with all of Army, Navy, Air Force, and Marine Junior ROTCs in the U.S. and in the entire U.S. For all Junior ROTCs out there, they were 11th in the nation. The unique thing also, except for one of them, three of them had never picked up an air rifle or shot any kind of a rifle before getting to high school in junior ROTC because we do basic marksmanship and some of that kind of thing. So not only did they come on strong, but really did well, so proud of how they did and finished 11th and 4th overall in all of Army Junior ROTC. So hats off to them for well done.[248.23][248.23](APPLAUSE)
Thank you.
Thank you. Our other recognition tonight is our 2021 Teacher Forum Scholarship winners, and I think we have maybe five of the six young people. But just a little bit of history about this scholarship. So the Teacher Forum is a group that we have in the, in the school district, which is made up of the Teachers of the Year from each of our schools. So each school, every year, they nominate and elect a Teacher of the Year, and those teachers come together. It's not led by the district office, it's led by the District Teacher of the Year, so it's a very, very much teacher-led and teacher-directed organization. But several years ago, in 2011, I believe is when it started, so 10 years ago, they started offering a scholarship to Oconee County high school seniors who are going to college to pursue a degree in teaching, so that we're encouraging our own to go become teachers and then hopefully come back here and teach for us one day. And that has happened. We have, each year, we hire Oconee County alumni to come back and teach in our schools. So this year, we have two young people from each of our three high schools, so a total of six, that will receive a $3,000 scholarship to go to college, get their teaching degree, and we're going to hope come back here to Oconee County to teach. So when I call your name, I'm going to read just a sentence or so about you. If you'll come up.
And we'll sit down.
Ms. McCormick and the other board members will come down, and they've got a certificate for you, and stay pleased so we can get a picture. Mr. Hamby will tweet a picture out for everyone to see. So from Seneca High School, we have Cara Justice. Cara plans to attend Furman University and major in secondary education with a focus on math. Also from Seneca High, who I don't believe is with us tonight, is Mackenzie Martin. Mackenzie plans to attend Western Carolina University and major in early childhood education. The reason she's not here tonight is because Seneca's softball team is competing in the state playoffs, so she is there. From Wauhala High School, we have Ashley Lesk. Ashley plans to attend the College of Charleston and major in elementary education. And also Bryson Worsham. Bryson plans to attend Clemson University and major in secondary education with a focus on science and teaching chemistry. And from West Oak High School, we have Taylor Boatright. Taylor plans to attend Clemson University and major in special education. And also Allison Paige Holcomb from West Oak. So neither of our West Oak students made it.
Softball game, too.
Softball as well, okay. So Paige plans to attend Anderson University and major in secondary education or special education. So we want to congratulate the three students we do have here tonight and the other three who aren't with us.[459.34][459.34](APPLAUSE)
I'm going to have to do this with like, the board will step up over there and you ladies come down in front of it. Over there, we do. Five, three, one, two, three. One, two, three. Great, thank you. Good job.
Thank you all for coming.[486.13][486.13](Clerk)
All right, at this time, we need to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Y'all received this agenda earlier, like, last week. Anybody have any changes, anything they think that needs to be? All right then, with no objection, we will approve the agenda for the May 17th, 2021 regular board meeting. At this time, we have, I think we have five people that have signed up to speak at public comment tonight. I just want to remind you, we limit our public comment to 30 minutes, so comments should be limited by each individual to five minutes. Now, some people get carried away. Mr. Hamby is over here, and if you go to the four-minute mark, he has a yellow card he'll hold up, and at five minutes, we will, he will hold up a red card, and we'll ask you to quickly, quickly wrap up your comments. So just come to the mic whenever your name is called, and we're ready for public comment.
Luke Moore.
All right, so I get to be number one, so I seem a little nervous.
Just say your name one more time, just to make sure we get it recorded.
My name is Luke Moore.
Thank you.
So are you guys allowed to speak back during the public comment?
No, we're not.
Are you allowed to raise your hand?
No.
No, okay, well then I'm going to talk to you and as well as the crowd. Okay. Well, I got a list of like, eight pages of notes that I've been, I've been working on, and I don't have time for that. So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to scrap all of that and go off of principle. We started this meeting here with the Pledge of Allegiance, right? It says, "One nation, under God, indivisible." There's something that's being pushed into our schools and it's creeping in, it's called critical race theory, and it divides the people. It's got race in the name, and it teaches us that one race is more opportunity, has more opportunity than the others systematically, which is, as far as I can tell, is not true because in our schools, we have the same teachers, teaching the same curriculum to kids of every color in the same classroom. Our system here is equal. The difference we have, a lot of times, is outside the school perhaps, but this has been creeping into the school. It started at the, at the college level, it's working its way down, it's coming in. I've got little babies, you know, they're, they're eight and 10 right now, wants fixing to have a birthday, he'll be nine. I don't want my kids being taught that because they're white, they're oppressing somebody else, or that I did because I'm white. That ain't the case. I hate that these girls here left because they was a mixture of girls here. There's a mixture of people in this room, and every one here has the same opportunity. If you will go out and focus on making good moral choices, if you will focus on being a good human being, and if you will give it an honest effort, and if you will pay attention to your children, don't matter what color you are, pay attention to your kids. Show them, America's yours. That man walking out, he might be different than me, but guess what? He's got just as much opportunity in America as I do. It's the American dream. We can all come, we can all choose our destiny. We all have the ability to say, "I want to become this in life," and reach out and get it. We just had eight years of a black president, correct? There is many people of color in office, in all different aspects of offices. It happens. It's here, everybody has it. But there's a problem. You can see, I done, I done the study, like I said, I had eight, eight pages of notes. Starting in the 1950s, the home lives of people had mothers and fathers. It has steadily declined over the decades. Incarceration rates has inclined at the same rate fatherless homes have increased. You ain't got a daddy in the house? That's strike one, it hurts. They need the good people in their lives to show them what a man needs to be, to show them what, when you stand up, what you stand for. The system here, what's coming in, there was a lady here just not too long ago talking about it, and they use really pretty words, they say, equity, inclusiveness, you know? Those things sound like something everybody can get behind, but equity, depending on where it's coming from and why, it could be a bad thing. What we look for and what we strive for is equality of opportunity in this country. Everybody needs the right to be able to stand up and decide who they want to be and go for it. Don't matter who you are, boy, girl, black, white, don't matter. You want to be something, you ought to be able to reach out and get it in America, especially in Oconee County. We don't stand for that kind of nonsense. As a whole, Oconee County is not a racist county. There's obviously, I see you with your card, there's obviously people out here that are stupid, and it happens, but it's not the majority, and it don't represent us. And I want to make sure, I know I've got five minutes, but I want to make sure that when it comes time, there's going to come a time, it's going to come here, and you guys are going to have to decide if it's going to come into, to our schools or not. I don't know, me and you done had a conversation before, it's nice to meet you face to face. But I want you to know that I, me and the majority of probably everybody else in this room and everybody else in this county is willing to stand behind you and support you because they're going to call you racist if you deny it. You're going to be called a racist if you don't accept it. So we're here to stand behind you, give you support. The people's waking up, and we're watching, and we're here to support you guys as long as you're going in the right direction. We need it for our children. We don't hold nobody down here, we don't support that crap, and we don't want our babies being divided by color. I understand, I'm just a white guy, I'm, I'm the, I'm going to go over. I'm the world's worst according to these people. I am a straight, white, Christian male, and according to the left-wing media, I'm as bad as it gets in this country. But it ain't so. They're liars. I want good, and I want good for everybody, every color, every gender. I want good. And I'm going to stand and tell y'all that as long as y'all will uphold those kind of principles, we'll stand behind you and we'll give you 100% backing. Please, do not fall victim to what the big cities want and just turn it over and then devastate our kids by telling them, "This one is better than this one," so therefore that one's always going to be a victim. It ain't so. It ain't so.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick.
I'm going to turn that over. Thank you.[916.82][916.82](APPLAUSE)
Carl Rebenacker.
Oh, wow.
Hi, I'm Carl Rebenacker. I live down in, I live down in Chickasaw Point, and I'm not here because I have any children or grandchildren in the school system, I'm here as a taxpayer, and I'm just kind, I just want to express an opinion about how I think my tax dollars should be spent. In my opinion, the purpose of public schools is to prepare students to be self-sufficient adults, be able to manage their own lives, and to be educated in the basics, reading, writing, math skills, and I think probably more emphasis in civics and understanding how our government works and how it should work. I think that's something that has, that has been lacking. Also, that they should have the experience of learning how to work with others and teamwork through extracurricular activities and, and sports. And I think this education should be, I think this experience should be colorblind. Race should not, race should not play into it at all. And in my opinion, I'm here to speak about critical race theory. I don't believe that critical race theory, as I understand how it is being taught, accomplishes any of these goals whatsoever. It's, it's certainly not colorblind, and I think it will have the, I think it will have the effect of pitting people, pitting people against each other based on what, what group or what skin color they happen to be in. In my opinion, in kindergarten through 12 curriculum, it has no place. It, if I had anything to say about it, I would say not one penny of my tax dollars would, would be spent to support such a program, particularly if it, if it's mandatory. I think if it has a place anywhere, I think it's, I think it's for older, older students, say at the college level, who have the, have the experience and sophistication to understand the principles involved. If they want to take it as an elective or, or choose to get that education at the college level on their own, then by all means, go for it, it's their choice. But I think it, in, from everything I've found, it's, critical race theory in the public school systems right now seems to be, seems to be a weapon being used by its proponents to make some students feel bad or guilty about who they are through no fault of their own, just by their skin color, they have some kind of inherent advantage over everybody else, and that they should feel, they should feel bad about it. Let's see, I would say, they are being made to be, feel bad possibly, maybe they have some ancestors who, several generations in the past, did some bad things. Okay, they should not be judged by things that they have not done themselves, and I think, I think at the educate, at the, at the elementary level is that they don't have the maturity or understanding to process, to process these issues properly, and that they could, they could take on some undeserved, undeserved guilt. And I just don't, I just don't think that these are things that should take, that should be used in measuring who they are as people. It is, in my opinion, it's forced social engineering, it's institutionalized bigotry, and it's child abuse. And as I said, my wife and I, we don't want to see one penny of our tax dollars spent to fund critical race theory teaching in the public schools. We just don't.[1166.54][1166.54](APPLAUSE)
Noah Baker.
Yes, is it on? Okay. My name's Noah Baker. I've been a citizen of Oconee County for about 40 years, since a child. Growing up as a, as a young man, I didn't know there was a color, I didn't know I grew up as a white man, I just grew up as a man. I didn't know there was a difference. I'm here as a concerned citizen for our county and for our, my children, I have five children along with my wife. We have two in elementary school, one going to graduate high school this year, but we have two in elementary school, Faroe. I think anytime you put a label of race in anything, you automatically segregate immediately, one way or the other, and then you put theory on top of that, it's just a theory. I'm sure there's racism out there, I've seen it. I've not participated in it, but I've seen it. But systematic, the numbers don't show that, I've not seen that. You look at the FBI reports, they're not there. They're not there. I think we have a breakdown in the home. I think we have a breakdown where we have a separation of what should be taught as educators and what the responsibility of the parents are. It's the responsibility of the parents to educate their children. You are here to assist. Teachers are here to assist, and I think that's gotten lost. I think that we've allowed parents to not be held responsible for their position, and I think that needs to change. This started for me back over the summer. I was one that went to DC to support our president, not necessarily because I condone or defend anything that he has done, but he was still the president. So this has just been a journey for me, to watch this county grow from 90 Republican delegates to 400. There's a movement going on, we're here to support you, but at the same time, there are morals that need to be taught to our children, and we need your support. Thank you.[1311.91][1311.91](APPLAUSE)
Cindy Rupana.
You as well.
Thank you.
She was worried about the last night. Thank you. My name is Cindy Rupana. I'm a grandmother of students in Oconee County schools. I did have some children that went to the schools here, I moved up here from Texas back in 2000, and I'm concerned. October 13th, 1968, my father, Lieutenant Commander James D. Hunt, was shot down right outside of Vietnam. He was in Vietnam defending the South Vietnamese' right to be a free nation versus the communist nation. I've read the critical race theory, I've read the 1619 Project. If you look at the critical race theory, if you replace the words of equity for, and equitable disparity because of color or national culture, and put in that economics, you're looking at a communist manifesto, folks. Don't take my word for it. I'm asking you, look at it. Read it, read the communist manifestos, there's a couple of them out there, Marx had one. If you start changing the words, they look very much alike, and they're saying the same things, and that's what we're teaching in other parts of the country, our children. I don't want to see that in Oconee County, because I want my children's children, and I'll be a great grandmother in December, so I want my children's children and their children's children to grow up the same way I did. Color doesn't, color of your skin don't matter, the color of your heart matters, how you treat people matters. What school districts are for is to help our kids learn history, and we need to learn the real history. I've looked at a couple of the history books, and one of the things I've advocated, which will be another time of coming up here, is there needs to be more review of the books, because some of those history books aren't real accurate in some things. I lived through them, and there's a couple of you of the age group that I'm in that lived through it too, and if you read it, you're like, hmm, that's not quite how that went. So we need to be really looking at our textbooks to make sure that critical race theory or any other theories that are indoctrination theories don't get into them, that they're accurate and realistic, because our children will learn from the mistakes of their fathers. That's how, I mean, I didn't make the same mistakes my great-grandparents made that raised me or that my parents made, because I learned from their mistakes. Actually, I learned from my older sister's mistakes, because I didn't want to get punished. So she made a mistake, she got punished. I learned from that. We don't have accurate history books, if we're not teaching the basics, I think we've all, the whole country has gotten off into this testing, testing, testing thing, and we're not doing our students a service of learning what they need to know to make it in the real world. And so the critical race theory doesn't teach them anything that's happening in the real world. We need to teach them kindness and to be good to each other by our own actions with each other. The way I interact with you, or you, or you, or you, that's how we teach our children not to be racist. That's how we teach our children to be productive. The high school I went to in South Texas was 85% Hispanic, then there was the black group, then there was what, 2, 2.5, 3% of whites, and then the rest were other, we had some Lebanese and things of that nature. Out of that, out of my graduating class, we had at least 16 engineers, one worked at NASA. We have several scientists, one that heads a program on obesity here in the United States, had several doctors and lawyers, I'm one of them that became a lawyer. So the opportunity's there, but it's how the school system teaches their children to respect the learning and that they're there to learn, and what they're there to learn is the basics on how to be productive members of society. So I caution you, please look at the critical race theory, please look at the 1619 Project before it comes creeping into our school district, because I don't think it's what any of you would want your children, your grandchildren, or your great-grandchildren learning. Thank you.[1612.76][1612.76](APPLAUSE)
David McManan.
Hope everyone's well this afternoon, glad to be here. My name is David McManan. I appreciate the honor of coming before you, ladies and gentlemen, to speak to you just for a little bit here. I want to introduce myself, I am David McManan. I am the newly-elected chairman for the Oconee County Republican Party here in Oconee County, and I bring good news, okay? I won't, I like the smile on your face, thank you.
We like good news.
As Mr. Baker mentioned earlier, our delegates in the Republican Party went from 90 delegates to 426 delegates in less than one month, so there is a big movement in Oconee County. People are taking notice of what's going on in Oconee County now, more than ever. And some of the old leadership in the Republican Party admitted to me that they looked at state issues and national issues, but never took notice of local issues. Well, part of our campaign and part of our promises as the new Republican Party leadership is we're going to, to get more involved, are just as involved with local politics and local issues in Oconee County more than ever in the past 20 years. So that's coming down the pipe right now, and we're here for you guys. I know you're a nonpartisan body politic, however, in the last 2020 election in Oconee County, 73% voted Republican in Oconee County precincts, 25.6% voted Democrat, and 1.4% voted independent. So I'm here to represent the 73% of the people who, obviously, you guys depend on their votes as well. As Mr. Baker mentioned earlier, our delegates in the Republican Party went from 90 delegates to 426 delegates in less than one month, so there is a big movement in Oconee County. People are taking notice of what's going on in Oconee County now, more than ever. And some of the old leadership in the Republican Party admitted to me that they looked at state issues and national issues, but never took notice of local issues. Well, part of our campaign and part of our promise as the new Republican Party leadership is we're going to, to get more involved, are just as involved with local politics and local issues in Oconee County more than ever in the past 20 years. So that's coming down the pipe right now, and we're here for you guys. I know you're a nonpartisan body politic, however, in the last 2020 election in Oconee County, 73% voted Republican in Oconee County precincts, 25.6% voted Democrat, and 1.4% voted independent. So I'm here to represent the 73% of the people who, obviously, you guys depend on their votes as well, even though you're nonpartisan. So I just want to let you know that we're here to help you, we're here to support you guys any way you can, any way that we can, and we will be here. And one of the things that we're doing is, on a local level, we've had five meetings since I became the new chairman, and that's the five districts that represents all parts of Oconee County. And we did a straw poll, and we asked the people of Oconee County, the Republican Party, the people that live in Oconee County, what were your big concerns in Oconee County? There were your normal, people would talk about taxes, people would talk about roads and bridges needs to be improved, but the two biggest things that all five precincts of people talked about and carried on a steady conversation and debate about was, number one, was crime, the overwhelming dope pandemic that we're having in our county affecting our kids. And the second thing is, they want to get more involved in school issues and our children in Oconee County. So I found that quite interesting, that that was two of the Republican Party's two major concerns. And so when I started hearing about critical race theory, I know that you guys have not, maybe this has not come before you guys, but I'm afraid it's going to, and I started reading about critical race theory, and there's a lot to it, I mean, you got, there's a lot to soak in. And, but what I've, what I've soaked in my brain is, I remember that great saying that Martin Luther King said, that he wants the people of the United States to be, for a man and a woman to be judged by the content of its character and not by the color of his skin. But I, I truly believe, the more I read about this, I believe critical race theory says that you should be judged by the color of your skin and not your content of your character. I believe it's just the opposite. I do, what I do get out of white, white privilege and critical race theory is that if you, every one of you folks up here probably have worked your tail off like I have to buy your home, own a piece of land, whatever that you're proud of, this white privilege means that you're a racist if you own, if you have a privilege to own your own home. And I've, I've been reading a lot about this, and that was one of the articles that was brought up about that, is the more you work and the more you own, it goes against the Marxist theory, Karl Marx, the father of socialism. I just believe that it's very important that we, that we think about this, if it ever comes before you, I promise you, the people of Oconee County will support you if you reject this idea. We will make it our mission to make sure that we stand with the school district and support what's morally right for our children, and people should not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. And also, before I leave, I would also like to tell Mr. Thorland, and you're probably aware of it, there are county employees, school district employees, and teachers who are afraid to voice their opinion for fear of being fired. I mean, we all know that, that's just common knowledge. But I promise you, there are people that, that in the school system that are concerned but are afraid to talk about issues. And I'm glad a precedent was set last week or last month. Mrs. Shepherd, she come up here and spoke about this, so now there's a precedent that school employees can talk about issues, and I'm, I congratulate her for doing that, so that maybe teachers and employees won't be so scared to say something that's on their mind out of fear of being fired. So Mrs. Shepherd did a great thing, she set a precedent, and I appreciate y'all letting me have the time to speak. Thank you.
And that is all of our public comment tonight. We appreciate you to be in here tonight for this. At this time, the first item in our agenda is approval of minutes. We have the minutes from April 12th, 2021 work session, April 19th, 2021 regular board meeting, and the minutes also from April 30th, 2021 special call meeting. Did anyone have any additions or corrections on this? All right, then we will approve the minutes from those three meetings with no objection. And now we'll turn it over to Dr. Thorland for his report.
I don't have a lot since we met last week. I did just want to, I guess you, you watched the news and read the papers just like we did, but quite a change in our COVID protocols in the last week, when the governor announced almost a week ago last Tuesday that it was going to be optional for students to wear masks. My frustration with that came because there was also a state office, the State Department of Education, that still had a mask mandate in place, so there was confusion amongst state offices, and I was frustrated by that, to be quite honest. It made Wednesday morning quite a chaotic day in our schools, when just a little bit of organization could have fixed that problem. I didn't necessarily disagree with what the governor said, it's just, it would have been nice if that could have been communicated a little bit more orderly. I will say that beginning Thursday, of course, when those changes took place, we have had a lot of happy students and teachers as well, faculty members, staff members, not having to wear masks, so that's been a positive thing, I think, at least most people would probably say that. That's also spurred a few other changes for us. We made the decision to drop the limits for attendance for our graduation ceremonies, make those masks optional, so May 29th, just not even two weeks from now, we'll have our graduations, they will be outside in our stadiums, and they will no longer be ticketed events, so we'll allow anyone to come to those. We have continued to see a decline in cases. Last week was our first week, maybe, all year, that we had no reported cases. But before we get too excited, we had two this morning. But still, the number of cases is, is decreasing, and that's certainly a positive for us as we look forward to a normal school year in a few months, starting in August, when we can just kind of get back to normal. But things go well, we're busy end-of-the-year activities, our schools stay busy with, with testing going on right now, but a lot of the end-of-the-year activities that we're getting to open back up and have now, some of the awards programs, concerts, I went to a chorus concert late last week, and it, it started feeling normal again, the students didn't have masks on, and the auditorium was somewhat full, so it's good to see those changes coming. And we're just working hard to get through the end of the school year.
I was at Westlake's Honor Award banquet, or not banquet, their Honor Day, last week, and there wasn't a mask inside, and it was, it was a good feeling to get, to feel like our students and our teachers and everyone could get back to normal. All right, the only action item that we have on our agenda tonight is the second reading of our fiscal year 2022 general fund budget. And Mrs. Moore, will you just kind of hit some highlights on that for us again, please? I don't think there's been any changes, but...
There haven't been no changes since last week. The budget is $106,705,304. It is a balanced budget, will require a small amount of additional local revenue, but no tax increase, we're not asking for any tax increase, we think the growth of a mill will cover that. Does include raises for all of our employees and an increase in our health insurance and retirement. We have decreased the number of FTEs by about 11, and we moved some of our interventionists to the COVID money, that's one of the things that have helped us balance this budget.
Okay, and the amount that we're asking from the county?
Extra, the additional amount, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, just the total amount that we'll get from?
Uh-huh, $68,267,197.
All right. Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions on anything that they've seen, heard? All right, then at this time, I will ask for a motion to approve a second reading of the 2022 general fund budget.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second, there's no more discussion, so all in favor? All right. And that is the only item that we have for, for action tonight, so at this time, we will adjourn to go into executive session for personnel items, appointment recommendations, and changes. So thank all of y'all for being here with us, and if anybody wishes to stay, we will certainly come out and, and go over the changes, but this is the end of our meeting. Thank you.